I'd like to take a few moments to conduct our legislative caucus prior to the start of our legislative session. I will call the meeting to order. Mr. Parker will lead our roll call. The invocation this evening will be led by Councilman Jones, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilwoman Davis. For communications, we will receive a presentation from Liz Evans-Scolfaro regarding the 13th Annual Great Harrisburg Litter Cleanup. We will then move to courtesy of the floor, then the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on March 24, 2025. You will hear three reports of committee this evening. I will deliver the first report on behalf of the Administration Committee on the Work Session of April 1, 2025, followed by a report from our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Vice President Green, on the Work Session of April 1, 2025. And the final report you will hear this evening, well, actually, there will be no report from the Public Safety Chair, Councilman Jones, on the Work Session of April 1, 2025. We will take action on Resolution 17, 2025 later in the agenda. We do not have any ordinances for first reading, ordinances for amendment, or ordinances for final passage. Resolution 17 of 2025, we will suspend the rules for discussion, and then we will vote upon. Resolution 19 of 2025, we will vote upon. Resolution 21 of 2025 will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Resolution 22 of 2025 will move to the Administration Committee. Resolution 23 of 2025 will move to the Administration Committee. And Resolution 24 of 2025 will move to the Public Works Committee. Is there any old business for discussion, council members? Any new business?
Madam President, just a reminder for Hot Spot Saturdays on the 19th.
Any other new business? Okay, and then we will adjourn. The time is 6:04 PM. I would like to officially call our legislative session to order. Mr. Parker, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels is absent. Ms. Davis?
Present.
Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Rawls?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Ms. Bowers?
Present, thank you. The invocation this evening will be led by Councilman Jones.
Thank you, President Bowers. First, I want to say, I want to send condolences out to the Hunter family and make sure that we have a moment of silence and just keep in our hearts and our prayers the people that are struggling in the city of Harrisburg. It's some very turbulent times that we all are dealing with, but, you know, I just want to make sure that we are keeping everyone prayed up. So let's just have a moment of silence for the Hunter family and those who are struggling in need. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilwoman Davis.
Let's stand for the pledge, please.
United States of America, into the Republic where which stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davis. For communications this evening, we will receive a presentation from Liz Evans-Scolfaro regarding the 13th Annual Great Harrisburg Litter Cleanup. You're welcome to use this microphone if you want to have a seat here. Just please make sure that it is very close to you so that those viewing online are able to hear you. Thank you.
Thank you to the Honorable Council for allowing us to speak tonight. Very appreciative. As President Bowers said, I'm Liz. I'm Revitalization Coordinator for Tri-County Community Action. I work in Tri-County's Allison Hill office, and the cleanup is now in its 13th year and draws hundreds of individuals and groups who clean the city's Allison Hill, Midtown, and Uptown neighborhoods on one Saturday in April around Earth Day. As Council knows very well, litter is an ongoing problem here in Harrisburg. This despite the fact that individuals and groups are regularly working hard to beautify city neighborhoods, including Councilman Rodriguez's Hot Spot Saturdays. One goal of the Great Harrisburg Litter Cleanup is to show residents how much good can be done in a single morning and to inspire them to keep their own blocks litter-free. There's a famous saying that's over 200 years old, but it's still true today. "Let everyone sweep in front of his own door and the whole world will be clean." It's this philosophy that we hope our neighbors will embrace in larger numbers. Last year, we had 425 registered volunteers who picked up about five tons of litter. We also got six tons of tires out of the waste stream that day and properly disposed of. It was roughly 600 passenger tires. We are grateful to our partners who help make the cleanup a success, especially the city's Department of Public Works. The extensive experience that public works supervisors possess make the entire cleanup run more smoothly, to say nothing of the huge amount of work done by its drivers and other employees. We rely on Capital Region Water, which also provides trucks, drivers, and workers, and the Lancaster County Solid Waste Management Authority, which allows us to dispose of all the collected trash for free at the Harrisburg Incinerator. We also work with Waste Management, Keep Pennsylvania Beautiful, Area Churches, and Schools, including Logos Academy in Midtown and Lighthouse Christian Academy in Allison Hill. A good number of Harrisburg-area community college students have also signed up this year to volunteer. It's really rewarding to see how hard the school kids work and how proud they are of the difference they've made. We believe that winning the hearts and minds of young people will bring about lasting change in attitudes toward litter and about the importance of making it a thing of the past. Harrisburg Sustainability Coordinator Madeline Good is working to have the city donate healthy snacks to our volunteers, for which we're grateful. Pendot provides Tri-County Community Action with hundreds of trash bags, work gloves, and safety vests for our volunteers. Although, we also buy hundreds more trash bags, litter picking, grab-and-reach tools for our volunteers to use, and T-shirts as our way of saying thank you. For me, one of the most inspiring things about the Great Harrisburg Litter Cleanup is that it's a true collaboration between citizens, nonprofits, city and state government, schools, and private businesses. It's an example of how communities can accomplish great things when we all work together. Tri-County's mission is to make a difference in people's lives, in part, by working to make their neighborhoods safer and more beautiful places to live. The Annual Great Harrisburg Litter Cleanup is just one of the ways we undertake to fulfill that goal. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak. I've brought flyers in case you're interested, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have now or at the end of your meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We will now move to courtesy of the floor. Just a few housekeeping notes before we begin. Please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You will have four minutes to share your comments. Mr. Parker will serve as our timekeeper. I will begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment?
Hi, good afternoon. My name's, sorry, my name's Naima Aiken. I lived in Enola, Pennsylvania at the time. But when this happened to me, I was visiting my mother on McClay Street in Harrisburg. I was parked on Moore Street, and I was leaving my mother's house. Can't remember the alleyway, but I remember turning down Wood Bond Street and then turning down Sixth Street, and then I turned on McClay Street, seen a cop in the front of me. So I thought they was pulling over a cop, a car in the front of me, so I was gonna go around the cop car, but then I seen him backing up and then turning sideways. All of a sudden, I seen the officer jump out his car, pointing a gun at me. So all of a sudden, a whole bunch of cop cars were, sorry, were swarmed around me. I pulled down my window and was asking, what did I do? An officer was telling me to get out the car. So I tried to explain to the officer that I have a cane and I have a brace on my leg. But he yanked me out the car and put me in handcuffs as I was on the floor. I'm still yelling, what did I do? Can somebody call my mother? The officer told me that I was, sorry, that I was grown, and I'm still saying, what did I do? What did I do? The supervisor officer came, took me out of handcuffs, put me back, helped me back in my car up off the floor. Then he told me that, first he said that I was pulled over because of a stop sign, then I was told I was pulled over because of my tent. Then I was told I was pulled over because I thought I, they thought I had a gun in my car. Then I was told I was pulled over. Can't remember the fourth one at this time. I can't remember the fourth one at this time. He put me back in the car. I called my mother to tell her what was going on. I was so shaky, I couldn't drive my car. So one of the officers had to get in my car. The supervisor walked me to the gas station on McClay, but then my knee gave out because I was so shaky. The officer then helped me back up, walked me to my car again, and he was just talking to me. Asked me, did I need medical attention? At first, I said no, but I was so shaky, my head was hurting me because when he pulled me out the car, my head bust on the floor, also the left side of my body. He did call paramedics. Paramedics did arrive later, and my blood pressure was like 200 over like 120. So I did go to West Shore Hospital, and I did get treated there. The MRI didn't show nothing, but I did have like a bruise on my, sorry, my forehead and a lump underneath my eye. They treated me for high blood pressure because it wouldn't go down. Also gave me like Adderall for anxiety. I think I'm forgetting anything. I hope I said everything. I did go to court and pay a fine for my tent. And they had the wrong officer on the paper. The officer that showed up, that wasn't the officer that was on the paper, that fined me. I can't remember anything else right now. I can't remember his name right now. Appleby was the officer.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, but your time has expired.
Do you mind staying back after our meeting to meet with Councilman Jones, our Public Safety Committee Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay.
Hello, everyone. Ryan Weatherford, 1100 North Third Street. Was just coming in today to just point out something I noticed, just to learn the city better, and just want to do a focus on gang prevention, just to make sure that we doing the right things to keep our streets safe. I think we doing a great job and are doing a better focus on those things as we head into the rest of the year. So I just want to thank everybody for listening to my comments a little while back. And if anybody needs anything in regards to gang prevention, definitely reach out to me. Willing to have any conversations with anybody. I'm a minister at the mosque, so you know, if anybody needs a conversation, if anybody needs to know what happened, you know, I'm here, you know, 24/7, 365, even on a leap year. That's all I got to say about that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment?
Good evening. Me, Senate Council. My name is Robert Williams. I'm a resident of Capitol Heights here in Harrisburg. I'm standing before you tonight, not just as a citizen, but as someone who was violated physically, emotionally, and constitutionally by the very department, this body is asked to oversee. On the night of January 27, I experienced what I believe is a clear case of police misconduct inside my home. Immediately after the incident, I began seeking answers. I filed an Act 22 and write to no request. I came here and spoke during public comment. I filed motions to court. I even secured subpoena for body cam footage. I still have not seen that footage. I have not received the incident report. I have not received the use of force report, and I have not received a single update from the city. I was told it was under investigation, but two months later, the only communication I received is one single phone call from Detective Fexer from the Internal Affairs Department. Three weeks after the incident, and nothing. No follow-up, no documentation, just silence. Council, this silence is not neutrality, it's complicity. When someone is harmed by the government and every door shut in their face, that is not just bureaucracy, that is a breakdown in justice. And I am urging you, with every ounce of respect I still have in this process, to intervene. I'm asking the Council to take five clear actions, well within your legal authority as a third-class city government. Hold a public hearing through a Public Safety Committee, invite testimony from the officers involved, the police chief, and the city solicitor. Get the facts on the record. Let the public see the oversight exists in Harrisburg. Demand access to body cam footage and incident reports. If they cannot be released publicly, then view them in executive session. You have that right and responsibility to see what happened under your watch. Place the incident on your legislative agenda until it's resolved. Make it an official item. That way, you're not just listening, you're acting. Immediately, activate the Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee. This board was created to review misconduct cases like mine. Let this be the first case that handles. Pass a formal resolution demanding transparency. Use the moral authority of the Council to urge the mayor and police bureau to stop stonewalling and release the records. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left? Seeing and hearing no one, we will move forward with our meeting agenda. The next item of business is the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on March 24, 2025. Council members, are there any revisions to those meeting minutes? Okay, seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. Reports of committee. The first report you will hear this evening, I will deliver on behalf of the Administration Committee on the Work Session of April 1, 2025. On Tuesday, April 1, 2025, the Administration Committee met to discuss one resolution. Resolution 18 of 2025, a resolution appointing Ms. Cheyenne Johnson to serve on the Environmental Advisory Council. Ms. Johnson was present to answer questions council members asked. Ms. Johnson introduced herself. She is a graduate of the University of North Carolina at Charlotte, where she earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in Spanish Foreign Language Education. She also obtained a second Bachelor of Arts degree in Latin American Studies. Ms. Johnson earned a Master of Business Administration from the Louisiana State University at Shreveport. She currently serves as a multi-site property manager for Morgan Properties. Council members asked the following questions. What sparks your interest in serving as a member of the EAC? What is your passion for the environment? Do you anticipate any potential conflicts of interest? Ms. Johnson, excuse me, shared about an instance where she took initiative to clean up the community. Ms. Johnson is interested in learning more about environmental justice issues present within the city. She does not have any conflicts of interest. The Environmental Advisory Council shall consist of seven volunteer members, of which three are appointed by the mayor and four are appointed by city council. I just wanted to note for the record, Ms. Johnson's appointment shall be for a term commencing on April 8, 2025 and expiring on April 7, 2028. I encourage my colleagues to support Resolution 18 of 2025 to ensure the Environmental Advisory Council has a quorum to carry out their purpose. The purpose of the Environmental Advisory Council is to oversee, discuss, and disseminate information on environmental issues in the city. I would like to remind everyone for the meeting record again that Harrisburg City Council has made three appointments. Resolution 88 of 2024, which appointed Mrs. Catherine Scott to serve as a member of the EAC. Resolution 89 of 2023, which reappointed Ms. Rafika Mohammed to serve as a member of the EAC. And Resolution 91 of 2023, which appointed Ms. Pamela Parsons to serve as a member of the EAC. If you viewed the work session on April 1, you would remember that I mentioned you won't see the resolution on this week's agenda because there's a 10-day grace period needed for Ms. Johnson's statement of financial interest. So by our April 22 legislative session, we will be able to take action on the resolution. So this concludes the work of the Administration Committee. The next report you will hear will be delivered by our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Vice President Green, on the Work Session of April 1, 2025.
Thank you, President Bowers. During the Work Session of April 1, 2025, the Budget and Finance Committee met to discuss Resolution 19 of 2025, a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional service agreement with Conrad Seagull Incorporated to continue to provide actuarial services consisting of other post-employment benefits, or OPEB, valuations as required by the Government Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 75. We had a thorough presentation from the accounting manager, Mr. Brian McCutcheon. There were no questions from Council, and I asked my colleagues to support this resolution.
Thank you, Vice President Green. As I mentioned during our legislative caucus, there will be no report from our Public Safety Chair, Councilman Jones, on the Work Session of April 1, 2025, as we will take action on Resolution 17 of 2025 shortly. There are no ordinances for first reading, no ordinances for amendment, and no ordinances for final passage. We will move on to resolutions. The first resolution for consideration is Resolution 17 of 2025. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution 17 of 2025, a resolution approving the sale of the Fire Bureau's Seagrave Pumper, VIN number 1F9EK28T2VCST2067 to High Spire Borough.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules for discussion.
Soon move.
Is there a second? Thank you. I will defer to our Public Safety Committee Chair, Councilman Jones, to lead discussion.
Thank you, President Bowers. The C Chief Interline is here, and that VIN number, we gotta do something about this. Sounds like, what's his name, son? The guy that's causing all the stuff in Washington. Tesla guy, what's his name? Musk, yeah. Can you just introduce yourself and just give a brief overview about Resolution 17, please?
Sure, I'm gonna keep it short and sweet tonight because I can barely talk. But this resolution is, excuse me, selling a fire truck that we've had in our fleet since 1999. We actually bought it used. It's a 1997. It was repossessed from a local municipality. We took it and have used it since then. It is the oldest rig in our fleet, and we were gonna trade it in on the two new fire trucks that we've received. However, they were only offering $2,000 for it, and we figured it was still running, that a smaller municipality could use it that had less call volume. And I hated to see a fire truck like that for two thousand dollars go to the scrapyard. So we started looking for somebody that was in need. And it came out that High Spire was in desperate need. They had their fire truck, their only fire truck was down. So we loaned it to them. They fell in love with it and we'd like to sell it to them for two thousand dollars, which was what was offered in the trade in four years ago.
All right, thank you. I don't really have any questions. It's pretty, pretty much clear cut to me. But I'll open up the floor for my colleagues and see if they have any questions. And I'll start to my immediate right with Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chief, for being here. Always a pleasure to see you. Thank you, Chair Jones. No questions for me.
Councilwoman Rawls.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Thank you for being here today, Director Interline. I don't have any questions. I hope you feel better.
My apologies for not being here April first. I would have felt a lot better.
President Bowers.
I don't have any questions. Feel better soon.
Vice President Green.
I don't have any questions. I hope you get better.
Councilwoman Davis.
I hope you get better also. Thank you. No questions.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. I will entertain a motion to resume our legislative session. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Before us, we have Resolution seventeen of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Parker, could you please read it one more time?
Surely. A resolution, I'm sorry, Resolution seventeen of two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution approving the sale of the Fire Bureau's Segrave Pumper, VIN number one F nine E K two eight T two V C S T two zero six seven to High Spire Borough.
Thank you. Council members, are there any final questions, comments or concerns related to Resolution seventeen of two thousand and twenty-five? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Jones. Yay. Ms. Rawls.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Bowers.
Yes.
Resolution seventeen of two thousand and twenty-five passes unanimously with a vote of six yays to zero nays, including the excused absence of Councilwoman Daniels.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution nineteen of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution nineteen of two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Conrad Siegel Incorporated to continue to provide actuarial services consisting of other post-employment benefits, OPEB valuations as required by the Government Accounting Standards Board Statement Number Seventy-five.
Thank you. Council members, are there any final questions, comments or concerns related to Resolution nineteen of two thousand and twenty-five? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Jones. Yay. Ms. Rawls.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Bowers.
Yes.
Resolution nineteen of two thousand and twenty-five also passes unanimously with a vote of six yays to zero nays, including the excused absence of Councilwoman Daniels.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution twenty-one of two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution approving the preliminary slash final lot consolidation and land development plan to construct a new City of Harrisburg Parks Maintenance Facility on site. The existing nearby facility at nine oh one North Twelfth Street will be demolished as part of a larger project redeveloping SRTA's operations and maintenance facility at nine zero one North Cameron Street, which will include the vacation of public rights of way and consolidation of lots in the block to the south and associated site and access improvements.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-one of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Resolution twenty-two of two thousand and twenty-five, Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution twenty-two of two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution appointing Shay Zwerver to serve on the Board of the Directors of Capital Region Water, a municipal authority.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-two of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Administration Committee. Resolution twenty-three of two thousand and twenty-five, Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution twenty-three of two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution appointing Pierre O. McCoy to serve on the Board of Directors of Capital Region Water, a municipal authority.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-three of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Administration Committee. Our final resolution this evening is Resolution twenty-four of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution twenty-four of two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Urban Engineers Incorporated for the purpose of providing construction inspection and construction management services on an as-needed basis.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-four of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Public Works Committee. Is there any old business, council members?
Yes, President Bowers. I have a question for Legal, Mr. Grover, on Resolution twenty. Where are we with that map?
On Friday, the lobby did secure a list of all the licensees from LCB in the city. It's a bit cumbersome the way they do it because they include all the expired ones and suspended ones. So we're having to pull through it. It's just on a large spreadsheet that we were able to get from them. So once we have a document that clearly establishes the open locations, that would come back to you guys.
When you say open locations, the ones that...
Active liquor licenses, right. So, so, so there's, but their list is everything right now. What they were able to give us was everything.
Okay.
For reasons I, I don't know the answer to the reason why.
So where does that leave these businesses right now unprotected?
Only, I think only in theory unprotected. You know, LCB, you guys have an active process going on in a public setting to, to secure this. We've always had a fairly good working relationship with them. Frankly, they're not looking for more work, if that makes any sense, as, as, as things go. I've heard from no one, any, have any active issues with them this year. We were requested again by the downtown owners to take a look at this and move it forward. It's moving forward. And I think as long as we're continuing the process, I think we're good. And our, our office will step in if there's an issue that comes up.
Okay, yeah, because we got, I think, Sawyers is getting very open and I think they're included in this, in this space.
Their owner's the one who, who was one of the movers to get this done. It's really just trying to draw the map in a way that satisfies LCB and the owners, frankly. They, they were unhappy, LCB, with the wiggly map all over the place. And so we're just trying to come up with a footprint, but it's really up to council when we give it the information, where do you want the line?
So again, my, my question, when we were having that session, was more of the map that was previously in place that went all the way up to Harris Street.
Which, which they weren't thrilled with at LCB, right? Because it was a wiggly, their question was, could you make it easier for us to follow? Because that was one of their questions. And I think that's probably part of why we got to the square that we have right now. I think it's just gonna be a bigger rectangle is where we're going. But where those boundaries are, the neighbors need to know you're considering it, right? Who, who have a thing there. They may not want the noise ordinance for the city, which is more liberal, to be in their neighborhood, right? I mean, that's really with this, why you have a public hearing about it. So, you know, that's where we have to figure out the council, if councils come for the boundaries based on licensees. I think it's easy to take it back to where it was.
That's where I was going with this.
But, but again, there's places that have opened that are, that weren't there before. The question is how big, how big of a place. And once we put it there, I think we have to advertise and tell the neighbors again that, you know, this is, this is being considered.
Timeline.
Well, for, for your next session, we should have something for you.
Okay.
You know, it'd be nice to sit down with you before that, you know, and talk about the lines.
Okay.
You know, because, you know, it's helpful to have input. You know, right now, we have a, we have a spreadsheet with, with lots of stuff on it from LCB.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Is there any other old business, council members? Okay, seeing and hearing none, new business, Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to send out a reminder that it's springtime, which means it is now hotspot Saturday's time. The first cleanup will be April nineteenth. We'll be taking care of the Ethel Alley location. The meetup will be on Seventeenth and Market Street, right here in Harrisburg, PA, on Allison Hill. Meetup time is ten AM and we will clean up to about twelve PM. Gloves, grabbers and other considerations will be there. So hope to see you there. If you're considering joining the cleanup, you can either call the clerk's office or email me directly at rrodriguez@harrisburgpa.gov. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. Any other new business? Okay, seeing and hearing none, the time is six thirty-eight PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. We stand adjourned.